Are you looking for quality, handcrafted, one-of-a-kind, unique items? Look no farther than Off the Square Artisans. We have over 40 artists ranging from woodworking to blacksmithing, photography, rug weaving, handmade soaps, and everything in between. If you're looking for home decor or a gift for that hard-to-shop-for friend or family member, come on into Off the Square Artisans located at 205 East High Street, one block east of the south side of the Rockville Square. Wednesday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sundays, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Remove your hats. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. You guys want to hear Dirk started?
Sure. Well, hello to everybody here at the World of Bedding. I think we should be facing on the council. Hello, I think just you maybe. For those of you that don't know me, Dirk Gariot, Management Services, IMPA. Here this evening with me, Mike Adams, Operations Manager of ISC. And it's already going to be Mike's share of the night. He's got a quarterly half-time report here to go over with everybody on past, present, and future work for the dedicated services program. So I'm not going to take any more of your time or Mike's time. I'm going to pass these out. He's going to lead the discussion this evening.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, thank you, sir. Thanks, everybody, for giving us a few minutes. Come in and have a chat with you. IMPA Service Corp., we're honored to be in your community and help you all out with some of the effort that you have here in working with Doug and his team to kind of get things in order and shape. And what we try to do is just share with you on this first page, kind of the service allocations that happen. There's some of these that don't really apply just because Doug and his team take care of some of the work, but we use them as metrics anyway, just so that we have an opportunity to track. It looks like for 2023 so far, this first quarter, we've had 17 poles that we've replaced. No service requests because Doug and his team are doing those. No outage restorations at this point in time for us. And then we don't do the tree trimming here, but we do do some engineering and planning. So we've been working a little bit on the Market Street for you all, kind of helping get that ready, as well as the Courthouse Square. So we shared some ideas with Doug and his team last week. And it's kind of a follow-up from what we talked to the council the last time you were here, really just putting those overhead facilities underground around the Courthouse Service request perspective, we don't have any that we do there here in Rockville, nor do we have the outage restoration. The following page is the pole replacement list. This page here, this is kind of what down in this last quarter, we had in our sights to do. Most of it's on the Market Street project. That includes that 17 poles that we've done. Just for transparency, we try to share all of that to you all, so you know, kind of what we're doing. Maintenance services, we're going to continue to do pole replacements throughout town wherever Doug and his team see fit. We've got a line of sight on it. I think there's 10 of them we have in hand, and then there's some others that they're looking at doing up behind the 36th saloon in the alley and kind of along that area. Ongoing responses to service requests. If you need outage help, we'll certainly be there to help you. So far, we haven't had any requests for that. And then there are no service requests that are open at this time. You guys do a great job of communicating with us. We have an outage emergency number that's used whenever you need it. We've got a link to service requests. And then anytime that you want to reach out to us and have a conversation to us about some of the work that's going on, there's our business manager's phone number regarding that. So just wanted to share those statistics with you today. And then when we get a little bit deeper into the conversion from overhead to underground on the square, I'll be looking at coming back and sharing with you kind of what those costs look like before we go anywhere to order any material or set anything up.
Timeline on that is after the festival, so be into the winter. Yeah.
And we've talked a lot about right now, the vendors have overhead services on it. So since we're going to be trying to look at underground, how that may impact things.
Right. We've talked about the boxes and how they hook up and all that. Yeah. Something real important, too.
Well, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to field those. But if not, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you.
You guys.
Before we skip out, is there any other general IMPA question or inquiries anybody anything needs?
Doug, go ahead.
Ah, no, it's just one. Okay. That sounds good. Then we had new councils, want to make sure everybody understands what IMPA is and make sure it's clear as mud. All righty. Well, folks don't need it, but we're not going to keep you with any time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Jason, are you ready?
Yeah. As you know, Parkview Incorporated has a lease with the town of Rockville long-term for the train people. If you haven't been by lately, the paint is suffering, and we would like to take on that project and have that repainted. In our lease agreement, it does state that we are responsible for the improvements, but that we need written permission. So I am here to seek that or see what we need to do. Those are just photos of what it looks like as of today. Just wanted to see what we needed to do to get that project started.
Probably been about 10 years. I'm sorry, Lou.
2016 is what I was told.
When it was painted?
Not a paint.
Okay.
Of course, I wasn't there, so I can't speak to the accuracy, but that's what I'm saying.
Sounds about right.
Yeah.
Are you going with same color?
That would be our intent, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's feeling pretty bad.
I make a motion to approve their request to second.
I want these back.
No, you can give them. Do you need anything else?
Just a letter of their approval. I can get that as early as tomorrow, and then I can provide you a copy of minutes for your records once those are approved in the next month.
So are you contracting out or are you doing it yourself?
No, we've been speaking with some local companies that have come in. They've actually already started on estimates.
I was going to tell you, be careful, don't fall, but you can.
Yeah, no, I'm not going to do that.
Okay.
So it'll be done in a fraction.
Oh, well, you could do it in a fraction.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mindy, you're marrying, want us both of you or what?
Well, we are back. We have had a completed bike and pedestrian master plan created, and Luke is here with the firm as well. So I guess first, did everyone get a chance to look over it? Are there questions? Is there anything that you need more information?
I was just going to drop the foot, but I was going to make a comment about you met with the VCA.
Yes, yeah.
And that approval has been, you know, given.
Yes, so let me pull up my email here just so I have it. So in talking with Pete Freds, who is with IDOH, which is where the grant came from, he gave us very specific instructions on what we needed to do as the final steps of this plan. And so we met with the town planning commission. They had to approve, they had to adopt the bike and pedestrian master plan as an amendment to the comprehensive plan at a public hearing. And then the amendment is then forwarded to you as the town council, who adopts it at a public hearing. So it is an amendment to the comprehensive plan. I know that you have a comprehensive plan on the table to update. You should be able to just take all of this information and transfer it to your other plan. But for right now, because you don't have that new plan created yet, this just has to be as an amendment to the current plan that you already have. And you know, there was questions about funding and things like that. Obviously, there isn't funding that comes with the adoption of this, but having this plan sets you up to already have a plan which will fare higher when you get ready to write grants and things like that. And you know, that's, you guys write grants, so you already know. And that's what they want to see, and it may be able to help with other grants as well for other projects that you want to do that just shows how it all ties together and the big picture plan that you're wanting for the city. We would recommend the best next practice, next steps in all of this would be to maybe create a task force that maybe has a town council person, people from the committee, parks, you know, a lot was done with the schools and with kids having to walk to school now. Bring in the schools, the parks, the trails, and things like that. And just, you know, that has everybody who already kind of has their plans, if they can come together and begin to make sure that you don't have trails and sidewalks meeting like this, that, you know, a conversation could have had them meeting exactly in the middle and stuff.
Okay. So what do you want us to do right now?
So you guys have to now adopt it.
Resolution that Luke and I had spoke about that was actually the planning commission, excuse me, I said VCA earlier, the planning commission, had met with, and they, in this resolution states that the planning commission had met with you, presented the bike and pedal plan, which was their recommendation to forward that to the town council for approval. So that's where we're at now, is if someone would just like to make a motion to approve the resolution, which would be 2023-06 for their approval to move forward with their amendment to the comprehensive plan.
I'll move.
I'll second.
On favor.
Thank you very much, and I hope it's very helpful to you in the future as we attempt to make new plans for Rockville. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thanks, folks.
This is actually one of the files.
Jamie?
Yes, I'd like to know about this sewer bill. How come it's got so high when some of the water is not going to the sewer? We took full lout a couple of years ago, got a top oil, Ronnie Back came in, leveled it out, seeded it for us, and didn't do too good over the winter. So we did it again this spring, strung it and everything. So it can't water. Morris says, no, he said that sewer bill will be sky-high. You wash your car, you can't wash your car, because it goes over the car wash 10 or 12 bucks. Wash your animals, that water is not going to the sewer. Because there'd be something done about it.
Well, as it stands right now, our water usage, our sewer is based off our water usage. I understand that it doesn't all go down the sewer, but as of right now, I don't think we really have a good solution for that. I don't believe anybody here has.
What about Montezuma? They have tabs or something that they put on their spigots, and that water is not used down going to the sewer.
We have been discussed that in the past, not even where we're at.
We can't afford it. I mean, we cannot afford it. Our social security don't go up, and you guys keep racking it up.
Well, Jeannie, I mean, what's the alternative? We don't like raising rates, obviously, I mean, who does? But we have to respond to what we're confronted with on the cost side. So, yeah, we know it stinks, you know, but what's the alternative? Do nothing?
No, try and see what Montezuma's got.
Well, that's an alternative. We've heard about it. I just heard about it a few days ago.
Are they providing those to the customers or the customers purchase those?
I have a customer purchase them.
Do you know how much they are?
Last year, they were $50 apiece.
Okay. So $50 for a separate meter?
And then the customer owes that, so if it breaks or needs repaired, they have to pay again.
How's the town get the readings?
There's actually a meter on the, it's actually a water meter.
Right. But I mean, does the customer?
It's not electronic. We have to go read them or who reads it?
They bring them in.
I'm sorry?
They bring them in.
They bring them in?
Right. They have to bring that in to get credit off of their water bill.
Okay.
I'm thinking of getting back so I can wash my car.
It sounds reasonable, yeah.
You know?
Is that per spigot, though? Or can they change it from spigot to spigot?
They can change it from spigot to spigot. They go better.
Okay.
It just meters any water that they use outside of their house.
That's for a specific time of the year, too, right?
Yeah, that's only the summer time.
Yeah.
Just for sure, the waters and gardens and stuff like that.
I mean, now it's a good idea. I mean, I'm sure we'll discuss it.
Yeah, but how long is it going to take for you guys to pass it?
I don't know if we're going to pass it. We'll have to talk about it, but, I mean, we'll have to do a little more investigation, find out what everything's about, how much trouble it's going to be for, you know, I mean.
And wasting money on other things, you know? You could pass this.
What are we wasting money on?
Bike trail? Come on.
Well, we haven't paid anything for that.
Well, we haven't done anything with that yet. We're just talking about.
Yeah. It just goes into plan right now, so.
It'll probably go through in a while. That's kind of stupid, though.
Okay, well, you done with your issue, your water?
Yeah, so let me know.
Thank you.
That's it. Oh, no, I want to say, Roger, you did a very good job for the cemetery.
Okay, well, where we at?
Oh, I didn't see you.
Yeah, I believe he's here. Yeah, Don, you ready?
I didn't see you.
Yeah. I wanted to have an address, you know, sidewalk ordinance. Have any, do you read it? Do you know anything of the ordinance itself?
What are you talking about specifically?
Crossing the sidewalk if you're real sure. So it says, no person may ride, any beast, no drive any vehicle along or across the sidewalk except for the necessity act of crossing the property, a property, established driveway. So I've got pictures, just a couple. I want to show you where it is on my, where I'm wanting to drive to across the sidewalk. That's all I'm asking for. The number one, I did a little bit of searching, and an established driveway, in layman's terms, means that it's either paved gravel or a bare vegetation. So in other words, a grass or rock or gravel. And I found out that there are even grass driveways. As you can see, that's what I've got. And it goes on, I can keep reading all of it and everything, but I've used this for now 23 years. No complaints whatsoever. Drove over it, and as you can see in the pictures also, on my side where the rocks at and on the dry, or roadside, it's all unlevel. It's no, you don't have to go over a big bump to get to it.
So you've been doing that for 23 years. What's the issue right now?
I got approached by the police and said that I was due against the ordinance.
Well, it's got to be more to it than that, Don.
I mean, the neighbors supposedly complaining about me doing it. Why? You're going to have to ask one of these two. Never was explained why.
You want to elaborate on it?
So they're basically having a squabbling match between neighbors, and one neighbor gets mad and says this, the other neighbor gets mad and says that, and it's back and forth. And we're not going to be their bond, so we're just going to start filing anything that, if they go to complain, we'll just file a ticket with them and let them settle with them.
So it sounds like you need to get along with your neighbor.
Well, and I'm glad, it's been about three or four days ago, and I did tell you guys, the boy, which is Brian, is his name, we finally shook hands, said to heck with them, we don't want none of it. We don't speak or anything because that's just the way they want it. It's not that they don't like me or anything, or that they don't want to talk or anything, they just don't. Just, I guess, just make things a level playground is all it is. So it's not that I've trespassed on them, I'm tearing up any of their property or anything. I think all of you here know how I keep my property and everything that I own.
Well, I know you keep your property nice, but I will say this, I know a little bit more about this than you think I do.
No, I'm sure you do, and I'm.
And the thing of it is, you created some problems earlier, so.
I understand that, and I apologize for that.
Well, my deal with it is, I don't know why in the hell you can't get along with your neighbors. And that's why, that's why we're here right now with this. I mean, I don't know what the board wants to do, if they want to change the order. It doesn't matter to me. If somebody wants to make a motion, I don't care, but this stuff has to stop.
I totally agree with you, Dave. Totally agree with you. And me and my wife both have health problems. It's not good for us mentally, physically, nothing, and we've decided, just let it all go. I'm tired of it. And I expressed that to Brian. Brian expressed the same thing. We shook hands, and that was that.
I don't know what kind of, I don't know what doing away with this ordinance is going to happen, you know, what's going to happen with it all over town. I don't know anything.
Well, and you know what? Here's the thing that I was looking at. There, I've seen down through the last few years or so, there is a need, not just for me, but a lot of people around town. I've seen big trucks go across there and over by the high school that needed trees cut down. The only way getting in and out was across the sidewalk. So they done it. There's all the time people having updates on their homes, putting windows in or doing landscape, and only, not all of them, but there's quite a few, one way in and one way out is having to go over being a sidewalk.
That's my point. I don't think anybody's complained about it that I know of, so.
Well, other than this issue that we've discussed, and that's one of the points, just because we've got somebody that has problems, just because we were feuding, shouldn't make it bad for everybody else, I guess.
So what do you want, what do you want the board to do?
Oh, again, number one, I want to know the way this, I read this to you, and what you saw that I had and how I was driving back and forth, was I even going against that ordinance?
I don't know. I mean, that would be a question for Nick.
So your question, Don, is what is a properly established driveway? Do you need a variance so you can drive over the driveway?
I guess.
Or do you need a meeting with the zoning commission to establish a driveway?
I might be at this, so I'll do the best I can.
Well, I'll tell you, I don't view that as being a driveway. And, you know, I think it's pretty clear, you know, you're driving over decorative rock and grass that's been in your yard, Don. There might be a little bit of tracks there, but, you know, letter of the law with that ordinance, I view it as violation, so.
Well, let's get away from the whole driveway thing for a moment. The whole issue is going across versus going down a sidewalk. I mean, the way, the way the ordinance reads, it's, you can't drive on the sidewalk. I mean, that's the purpose of the ordinance, I think.
You can't do either way. You can go on it or over it.
That's the way it reads.
See, if you drive over it, it's four inches of concrete, and if you drive over it with something heavy, it's going to bust the concrete.
Right.
And then you're going to have concrete that's busted because somebody drove over it, and then who's liable for that? Well, if you have an ordinance precluding people from doing it, and then they do it, it's very clear who's liable for having damaged the concrete. Whereas if you don't have an ordinance precluding it, they didn't do anything wrong, and then you're stuck with a civil suit.
Well, so it seems to me, okay, given that ordinance, the only way you could get around this is put a proper entryway, a proper drive, take out the sidewalk and put in a an entry.
Which would make it a driveway.
Which would make it a driveway.
And this is, this is another thing that you and I discussed at one point, way before all of this ever happened.
It's not a driveway, it's a sidewalk.
When they do, before he's.
When we do the road, I asked, would there be a problem in putting, and I don't even know what you're calling, where the driveways go in.
Approach.
Approach, okay. To put a second approach in there. You said you didn't see a problem, but of course, you use one per thing, and.
It would have to be, you know, agreed upon what we would do.
That's what, yeah, that's what it meant. So.
We've done that in other projects, so, you know, it's something that they can discuss as a board, if we want to create an access there. But again, right now, what's the solution now?
And that's the other thing, too. Like, I've got to.
Don't drive across the sidewalk.
Don't drive across the sidewalk.
I had told him that I would not write him a ticket if he drove across it one more time so that he could get to his parking or driveway and park it there until he went to the zoning board and requested a variance, and granted, then he could drive back and forth.
Okay. So that will be my next step? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I told you a couple of weeks ago. They have a right to do that. I mean, we can't, we can't tell you what they would or wouldn't do.
No, no, totally understand that. All I'm asking is, from the sound of it, you guys are not going to let me do this unless it's legally done.
Right. I don't think, I think it's very clear from that, that's not a driveway. A driveway would have an approach entryway to it. It'd be set up and constructed such that it wouldn't damage the public sidewalk. But that's a sidewalk that, you know, we're trying to protect and not have to redo every so often, so. And we had that issue in Marshall. Somebody backed a truck over the sidewalk, it busted the sidewalk, and now we're in a civil suit against them trying to collect money from them for having busted the sidewalk, which is why the ordinance is in place.
Well, then, my next question to the board is, what would it take to have that cut out and go ahead and make it? And we're only talking about six to eight feet total.
Are you asking me if we're going to pay for it?
No. No, no. I'm asking you what it would take.
What you have to do to make this new.
I'm sorry?
Is what, you're wanting to know what you have to do to make it new?
Yes.
Well, the first thing, I guess, would be going to the zoning board.
But it would have to be an entry to a driveway, right?
Right, yeah. Well, he's wanting to make it a driveway, that's the next question. Yeah, if you wanted to do that, go to the zoning board and have them approve it, so.
Yeah, okay.
And you'd have to write the letter requesting that meeting.
Right, there's a petition you have to file. Brandon can give you information on that.
You know, as far as construction.
Can I come up to you tomorrow, please?
Construction project.
You have to give notice to your neighbors and things like that. There's some requirements to it.
Anything exists before a construction project usually gets put back. Anything additional, that's something you would have to come to us and request. Now, this thing existed before the construction project, and it was already there. So that's typically how those are.
Okay, then the next question is, so what I'm asking for from the board, when the road does get put in.
When it does. We don't know when, for sure.
Well, no, 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 totally understand that, but since when it gets put in, when do I have to come and approach you guys again to basically, I guess, get my bid put in and say, hey, I would like it?
Well, if it's already there, we would consider it already there, and it'd be considered.
So they'd put it back in.
We would put it back in. If it's not there, then you have to, you know, there's two ways to go here. If you want to get your thing, your buggy, in the garage, you're going to have to pursue what they just recommended, the zoning and all that.
Go to the zoning board.
Otherwise, it could be another year or two. We don't know where we're at. We're still working.
I've got a $15,000 piece of equipment that is foolish to let it sit, and I'm not myself because of that. And I built a near, near $8,000 shed for that specific reason. So I've got money tied up, and the heck of the thing was, I came to the board not like this, but I came to a couple of board members, I went to the sheriff's department, the city police, and said, this is what I'm going to do, this is where I'm going. You guys have a problem with that? And everybody's not, no, not at all. So that's why I went ahead, and the only reason I'm telling you this, that's why I went ahead with my plan on buying those things and using them. So now, I guess in a sense, I feel like I have to jump through a bunch of barrels and everything to get what was basically okay, unofficially, I guess, is what I was wanting to say, unofficially, that it was going to be okay now.
Well, I still go back to, you've been doing it for 23 years, and all of a sudden it's a problem. So, I mean, something has, has created this problem, so, you know, I don't feel like we should take the blame for something that we had nothing to do with.
I'm not blaming you.
You know.
No, I'm not blaming you, never have.
And something else I want to tell you, just to let you know, so if you do repour this, if you do get this bearings, it will be demoed out when and if we get the road.
Oh, when you get the road.
I mean, I don't want you getting excited that we're tearing out your new concrete and, you know, I mean, two or three year old concrete, whatever it is. Because that's what's gonna happen.
They'll be put back, but it.
Yeah, and we'll go back, but it will be demoed out and.
So you have a period of time where it's under construction, is what he's telling you?
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm disappointed, but I guess there's nothing you can do.
I'd tell both of you if he was here too, that'd just be great if you two got along as neighbors, you don't have to wave at each other.
Again, again, a few days ago, we finally got together, we shook hands. That was that.
And you don't have to hang out and have barbecues together.
Exactly, we don't have to wave at each other, we're not that, but I'm too old for this crap.
Yeah.
I'm just done with me. Or I'm done with it. Well, again, I'm disappointed, but I'm not gonna.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thanks for listening.
All right, Don, thank you. Roger, you're up.
First of all, thank you for giving me the time to speak. Well, I think I'm the little butcher about Mary Garden Cemetery. Until something's done, I guess I am. I, this all started most recently last Friday, right before the holiday. I brought back six, uh, rather large fresh flowers to put on my family's graves for over the holiday. And I took them out there, tied them to the, to the shepherd's hooks. My mother, my sister, my girlfriend, my grandparents, my great-grandparents. Went to a spigot to get water because of fresh flowers. And I ended up going to four or five different spigots and there wasn't a drop of water in that cemetery. I was a kid in the sixties and I went out there with my great-grandmother, my grandmother, put fresh pennies and roses on every grave. There was always water in that cemetery. There wasn't anybody out there on duty. Mike Hall was out there trying to find his wife Suzie Green's new stone. I called up here at the office, talked to Brandy, she called Mark. Said we have two issues out here, no water and Mike Hall needs to find a gravesite. He comes out. I said, before you take care of Mike, I was here first and I'd like to know how come there's not water in his cemetery, right before a holiday, that's the biggest holiday of the year, in his cemetery. He said, if you have fresh flowers, you can go home and get water. The water's all shut down. And I said, okey-dokey. And it wasn't in the most pleasant manner either, it was kind of smart alecky. And I don't think I should be treated that way, I don't think any of the rest of you should be treated that way in this community. An hour later Doug calls and says, oh, we forgot, there's three hydrants that are on, coming out of the shop. My guess is they weren't on.
Yeah, they were, they're on a separate meter.
I know they're on a separate meter, but were they actually on?
Yes, they were on because he wouldn't have water in his building.
Well, he didn't seem to think that when he called me.
No.
Because he called me two days later and apologized and said, I'm sorry the water wasn't on.
The upfront ones.
Twelve, twelve hydrants, I counted, twelve.
Yeah, but those back three are on a separate meter, so they were on.
And they've been on continuously?
Yes. Yes, the only ones that get shut off in the wintertime are up front because there is a leak.
Hopefully your meter can, can verify that, right? I'd like to know what that meter reading was.
Well, I'll take the time to apologize to you too, Roger, because, I mean, I, obviously we didn't know this was off, but I, you know.
I left, I left a phone message for you.
I know.
And I sent, had Brandy, I realize that, and I'm sorry it did, but I was fricking one hot guy Friday afternoon, ahead of the biggest holiday of the year. I went to Nick's office Monday morning, he was gone, I hadn't heard from him. And I had Brandy send.
Just so you know how it works, Roger, I generally don't respond to the public unless they come to a town meeting. I'm the town, the.
Well, I'm, I'm here.
I, I know, but I'm, I'm the board's attorney, so if I took public calls from every single person.
I realize that too. I realize that too. But I had Brandy send a message to every town board member. I heard from a big fat zero.
Wasn't anything from me personally towards you, I guess.
It's not me personally there, I didn't want to make any enemies. Anyway, I told Dave last night, he's a good friend, that I unloaded on him last night. I was hotter than hell about the condition of that cemetery.
Yeah, I was just telling you for future reference though, that it, it won't be a return call if it's.
Well, it'd been nice if Nicole would have told me that.
She didn't know that, yeah.
I mean, I was there twice.
No, I just.
But I was out there today, I spent three hours. I started in the northwest section. I got to, if you, everybody, surely she got some pictures that shows that there's not any grass on a lot of graves and a lot of them are nineteen, twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty one, twenty twenty-two. I found one grave for fake farmer that was a two thousand fifteen and it had fresh straw on it. So obviously it didn't have any grass on it. Two thousand fifteen, how many years later is it? It's a dereliction of duty. And I mean, your help out there finds ways not to go to work. And there's enough work for two men out there every day, every day I've been out there, I never find anybody that's working. I got thirty-eight graves and I got to row nineteen by Park's pizza can. That's as far as I got, there, there's thirty-eight graves that need attention. It would take me probably another two days to go through the rest of that cemetery, full-time. To get all the graves roped down that need attention. There is work out there for two men, full-time. And I don't understand how come there's not two men working. If somebody can answer me that, I'll be a unhappy camper.
Well, Doug, can you elaborate on that?
Well, I mean, there's two cemeteries, so they could be at the other cemetery. Uh, I did use Mark.
So, so they're gonna work on an old cemetery?
Well, we gotta take care of both of them.
Ahead of the one that's on the highway?
No, but we rotate every other week. So we can't just abandon that one, can we? I mean, do you?
I'm talking, I'm talking gravesites back to two thousand fifteen. Uh, look, look, I, I got the date of birth and the date of death on every one of those.
Well.
There, there, there's seventy-sevens, there's seventy-sevens in there, there's eighties in there that they were buried.
Okay, but there are areas out there in the front with the trees and stuff that don't grow and never have grown grass for years, you know that, Roger, working with the.
There, there are triphasms out there on a lot of those graves. Triphasms. I can take you to them personally. Holes. Not five gallon bucket size, but two, two gallon bucket size.
Okay.
That you could get in and break your leg.
Well, it's not a golf course, I know that, it's not that smooth. But I walked it today, after I talked to you, I walked it, there are a few low spots here and there, but the grass, there are some bare spots, but there's some bare spots at my yard right now. So, I mean, and if Mark's not out there, he's probably at the other cemetery and I, excuse me, but I've been using him as an operator some here lately. So he was busy on Michigan Street with me. So, yeah, he's, he's other places, so, but he can always be contacted by phone. And if turns the water spigot off in the wintertime because there is a leak that we can't find, it doesn't come to the ground. So when it gets cold and nobody's watering plants, we turn it off, so the water's not just running.
So how's the gravesites handled, closing, are they, are they settled with water?
If they have time that day, if not, they do it the next day.
So your, your meter on your twelve should show a lot of water usage, right? For one, for one, basically one and a half. You're doing about one in a piece for a funeral a week.
I'd say probably.
Fifty-five funerals out there last year.
Something like yours, so, yeah.
I'd like, I'd like the board to share what those water meters decide.
Still in trouble getting soil.
Yeah, I assume it's not Roger.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, I've been sure Chris asked that. And again, everybody else in here has got a job, I know, but I've got time to, to, to mess with all this, all this stuff. So, um, after working with Mark, after talking to Roger, we looked at the graves, when the freeze was on, we did look at the Indian's graves and all that stuff. Um, the pile of dirt back there, the clay, anywhere the dam, et cetera. So, you know, slowly but surely, trying to take away reasons not to do something. So it's been fairly cooperative. The soil was an issue, the rain, hence the, the lean-to, you know, so we go Kingman, get some good soils, they put it on there. More expensive seeds have been purchased, uh, the weather's been dry and et cetera like that. To, to Roger's point, and Mike's point, the businessman, he's number fifty-eight. The funeral officer, that's one a week. And there's two and often three full-time employees out there. So it can be done, trying to get, make sure they have the tools to do it. My whole thing over this whole, this last week, and Park can attest to this too, right? You know what runs downhill and you know, it smacked me first, him second, you third. And I was, I was upset by it all, you know, it's, it's such a silly thing to say. Uh, so, but let's just fix it, you know, don't, you'll, don't make a bunch of excuses. Say, and, and to, to Doug's immediate credit, he called by right way. Roger told me that Mark had called him, he thought it was, it's gonna work out. We're just trying to get it going, so there's, there's a simple solution, you got, you got three guys. I was upset, um, uh, with the, the young man, not Mark per se. That's all Mr. Don, the person between me and him. It's been, it's been a slow process, it's been hard with the soil, um, it's not, to quote, this is not a full-time, you guys' job, it's not a full-time job for me. I enjoy it, but we're trying to make progress, but it's been painfully, painfully slow. And to the old cemetery, recently it's looked good, it is, it is on an alternate bike, they mow one, one week, one the next. And the girls from the prison, we do one week and then the next. It just, for everybody's education right now, because of drive, um, I kind of make it explicit to you, they don't mow this week. You're gonna do more harm than good if you try to mow. So trying to make progress, um, there's a difference between the, the real world and, and the business world and the government world.
Well, in all fairness to everybody, I had a talk with Doug this morning. Kind of told him my wishes. While they figure out, make a good solid effort.
Oh, yeah.
Take care of things. I told him to be politically correct, that we might have to have some re-education, uh, you know, and try to motivate some people, but, uh, we're gonna try to do what we can, Roger. I mean, I know, you've been talking.
It's been a long time coming.
I know.
This ain't my first radio here.
I know, but, uh.
Yeah, I've seen very little progress. I'm just saying, I've seen very little progress. I'd have been fired a long time ago if I did my co-op job, the way this town runs that cemetery. Y'all think it looks great, traveling down the road, Highway forty-one, thirty mile an hour. Yeah, it looks beautiful right now from the road. You get off the road and it's a train ride.
And Roger, my neighbor, for disclosure, public, public, maybe, I'm not even on my life. And so, again, I'm available. Um, I've tried to take what he has discussed or whatever and try to make it into a workable situation. I think Roger understands, I understand, if in fact it's been a, a cluster for twenty years, we're not gonna de-cluster it. In six months, so everybody understands that. But, um, so it was more of a PR camp, PR thing, it just, the, the whole, the house of cards kept coming down with the comment on the world there. And so, right back to, but this puts the, you know, one off shots, erases all the other ways.
Well, that was, it was uncalled for in both cases. I don't know if everybody knows the other thing I'm talking about, but you and I talked and that, that was uncalled for too. So that's why I spoke to Doug this morning and said that, uh, we're gonna have to re-educate some people. So they know how to talk to the public for one thing and to board members for another, so, uh, I think Doug was pretty receptive to that, so.
Uh, I, I make it a point once a week in our meetings to tell them that if you run into a situation that you don't feel like you can handle or not getting it handled, just walk away and call me. And I tell them at least once a week, you know, my phone's in my pocket or by my side all the time, if they're, they're upset with the public. I've got no problem coming out and seeing what's going on or talking to that person. So they, they are told at least once a week to make sure. And we're very polite.
Great, you'd be great, Brandy'd be great, everybody's been great to work with. Um, I think, you know, I don't want to outcut my coverage here, but, you know, I mean, I've got nothing better to do than to go down, sit, meet with you, whatever. Um, so I, I, and more than me myself available too and.
Yes, you have.
You know, so this, the, the board meeting for the cemetery is, is a week from tonight. Mark's gonna be there, talking with Park and, uh, with Carla. And, and re-education might be a too strong word, but we're gonna say, this, this is a new thing, you don't need three of you sitting at a dump site watching a funeral. One of you can do that, the other two can do something else, so it's gonna be handled. It's, it's kind of a wrench that's thrown in the works this last weekend.
Well, I mean, you know, you give us your list and we're gonna try and get it, I mean, give us, give us a little bit of time.
I've got this many in three hours and I'll be gone the next three days. I'll be back Thursday and I'm not gonna drop the ball. I'm gonna be back out there and I'll go through every section.
You'll keep us honest, I mean, Doug's gonna, I mean, he assured me that they would get started on it, so.
Well, does that mean we're gonna have two full-time employees out there working?
We do.
When?
Every day.
No, I was out there, three hours a day, I never saw one person.
Well, I better.
A town truck pulled in as I was leaving.
Today?
At eleven-thirty.
Today there's only one employee, he went out for this long enough and I sent him on another job because Mark was off with his dad at a doctor's appointment and Rodney Harney is on vacation.
Okay, so what, I'm saying, just while I was out there.
So that's why today.
There wasn't anybody out there.
Okay.
And there wasn't anybody out there last Friday, till I called. Till I was out there twice, before lunch and after lunch.
Okay, I know you're not happy, but I mean.
Well, we're still a bit.
We're gonna work at it, I mean.
Now, I come in Kevin, right now, if he wasn't on that cemetery board, the fricking weeds wouldn't be sprayed. And that's the first thing you gotta do if you're gonna reseed grass, is everything else has to be dead.
Yeah, we're working at it, it's been taking a little slower than, than, than most and you got new people. I think to Doug's credit, we got new management for the town, uh, employees. It's better on that end, uh, right now, but we'll make progress, I'm gonna make sure we do. Park, Park feels the same way and I'm sure Carla does, so.
And I'm telling you right now, you ask me if I should volunteer, I'm more than happy to volunteer, but I'm not gonna work out there with the same people that are out there.
Oh, you told me that.
I'll volunteer my tractor, I'll volunteer my power tiller, the reseeds and blessed in it, but it needs to be done this year in the fall. Now lime needs, is lime been put on there?
Lime is done.
So lime and spray.
And, and, and.
So we haven't done any fertilization?
No, we didn't fertilization, I think we're, the fall treatment, I'm talking, we see how much money we got, but like Justin Montgomery of Hope Green suggests, that we come in the fall and we do a, a winterizing that we call fertilization and a reseed. So we'll see how much money it takes. Um, Justin has been, uh, cooperative, he has, I think, actually come back out and touched up, I started seeing dandelion fluffy things. He has been cooperative in coming back out, I believe.
There's some buckhornies up there in front.
So we gotta spray again, but like, uh, Justin told me, there's, there's multiple layers of weeds, been there forever and, uh, some places it's killed off every weed and, uh, so.
Well, I'm saying, I wanna be a friend to the cemetery. And I'll volunteer my time when I'm available, I'll volunteer my tractor and our tiller. To use all, across the whole blessed cemetery.
I appreciate that, Roger.
I do also hopefully in me too, the flagpole and all that, been painted, written and all those, paying the flagpole, Mary Garden, fresh white paint. paying the flagpole, Merry Garden, Fresh White Thing.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I take back to Ohio.
Got two sets of claims, one is for the end of the month here for one fifty-six, one forty, fifty-eight. I think that's mainly, that's some liability, retirement payroll. There was two payments in there for the South Market Project, the right-of-way purchases, that there was a check that was misplaced by who it was sent to, so there are two checks in there. Those have been taken care of, and then, once I have the checks back from the bank, the reimbursement will be done through NDOT as well on those. It's the only documentation I really had on that one. And then I've got a set of new claims for June fifth, for three twenty, one thirty-six, forty-five. And, let's see, um, electric department had some supplies that they asked for authorization for. And I believe, uh, we do have our water and wastewater bond payments in there. And then we, Bill will probably talk about it in his report, but we did make the payment for, part of our leasing payment for the new police vehicles, that we'll be receiving maybe a couple by the end of the week, so he can elaborate on that, so that payment was in there as well, if anybody has any questions on those two.
Were you up there?
Nope, she covered everything, I.
Motion two, three, second.
All biber.
There's two, there's two different sets there. Um, I went ahead and passed over the bids on the truck that we advertised to Nick, so I did have a notice to bidders that was advertised appropriately, and we did receive one sealed bid in the office last Friday.
We did?
Nick would like to handle that for me, please.
This is exciting.
We haven't heard it yet.
Well, we had a minimum.
Holy moly, that thing sealed tight. Okay, the suspense is killing me, Nick.
He's only getting one down.
John Ricketts, twelve fifty-five, twelve nine fifty-five dollars.
Wow.
Okay.
We said it for twelve fifty, didn't we?
I'll make a motion, we accept that bid.
Second.
Notice the bidders said minimum bid.
One thousand.
One thousand was the minimum bid. So it exceeds the minimum.
Who made that motion, sir?
My second.
That was twelve fifty-five.
Thank you, Nick. I've got some paperwork that, I've received a packet, we, it's on the abatement for the town homes. The, um, I believe that particular one may have been mailed to me directly, and then the Park County Auditor brought over another copy, which they just needed additional copies. So I noticed that their CF one was signed by their attorney, the bottom first page maybe of the CF one. And then I'm guessing they need a signature from us on page two. If, can you just give Nick a few minutes to look over that? Yeah, this, these are, that's just a, a copy, but. I believe the auditor said there was something mentioned in the commis, their commissioner meeting, if that happened today, and then she needed signatures from us on the abatement, but.
So, I mean, basically, you have to issue whether or not the property owner is in substantial compliance with what their agreement was. And a signature of an authorized member, and attested by somebody, and then designated body. If they're not in substantial compliance, the property owner shall receive opportunity for a hearing. And you said it for a hearing date, if you don't think they're in compliance, was what their agreement was.
I don't recall the agreement.
It was based on the amount of employees, I think, is my recollection, but I could be wrong.
Typically abatements are, but I, I, I don't know what.
I, yeah, I don't have to top my head what it was.
Weren't they, didn't they originally ask for a tighter abatement?
Yes, they did, but they made some representations.
So I, that's why, I guess I was unsure on the documents that they were needing, so I mapped for us if we had already issued that.
Well, employee, that's a thing.
Well, we originally granted it, but in return for granting it, they made some concessions that they would agree to do certain things. All right, here, it's number of employees, two, with salaries estimated to be eighty thousand. And it says two employees with salaries are forty-six thousand, one eighty. So. Yeah, so it's based on employees and salaries.
I don't know that they have two employees.
They only had one that I was introduced to.
We just communicate just with one, but I, I don't.
And she, I mean, she indicated she was gonna be the manager.
If we need to look into that a little further, we sure can, and I'll present it again in a couple of weeks. But if that's what I need to research on to make, if they're in compliant with that, then they may have two employees. I just don't know who that other person is, or what their position may be.
Oh, they've got a maintenance person.
Do they?
Yes.
Bet they do, you know, better have.
So, is that something that I just checked?
I would, yeah.
On to see, or do we need any documentation further on that?
That's really up to you guys, as far as whether or not you want further information. They're indicating their attorney signed this as an authorized representative, indicating that they actually have two employees making forty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. And they had estimated previously, they'd have two employees making eighty thousand dollars, so.
Total. I've gotta verify the nature of my.
Oh, I know, I know. Is it only, so, I understand what you just read, Nick, that they're, they're below the.
No, they've each made forty six.
Are they each making forty-six?
Well, that's.
So, it gives instructions, it says not later than forty-five days after received this form, the designated body may determine whether or not the property owner has substantially complied with the statement of benefits, SB one real proper, which is what I was reading you about, what they represented they were gonna do. If the property owner is found not to be in substantial compliance, then designated body shall send the property owner written notice. The notice must include the reason for the determination, including the date, time, and place of the hearing to be conducted by the designated body. The date of this hearing may be, may not be more than thirty days after the date this notice is mailed. A copy of the notice may be sent to the county auditor and county assessor. Based on the information presented at the hearing, the designated body shall determine whether or not the property owner has made reasonable efforts to substantially comply with the statement of benefits. And whether any failures to substantially comply was caused by factors beyond the control of the property owner. If the designated body determines that the property owner has not made reasonable efforts to comply, is that designated body shall adopt a resolution terminating the property owner's deduction. If the designated body adopts such a resolution, the deduction does not apply to the next installment of property taxes owed by the property owner, or to any subsequent installment of property taxes. The designated body shall immediately mail a certified copy of the resolution to the property owner, the county auditor, and the county assessor.
And it doesn't say they have to be full-time employees, right?
It just says two employees with the estimated salary of eighty thousand.
Cover some of the other properties.
And then it says, the property owner whose deduction is denied by the designated body made appeal to designated body's decision by filing complaint in the office of the clerk of the circuit superior court, together with a bond condition to pay the cost of the appeal, if the appeal is determined against the property. So.
Okay. What do we need, motion boys here?
Uh-huh, if you're allowing them the abatement, a motion to authorize date to sign this.
Is that just yearly, you know?
They're required to comply every year, substantially comply every year for the tenure period.
So they're gonna send a document every year?
Every year, yeah.
To ask for that.
So really, the question isn't how many employees, it's whether you think forty-six thousand out of eighty thousand is an attempt to substantially comply. I guess that's how I'd frame that issue.
Yeah.
So the eighty thousand number, wasn't the sum of forty-six plus forty-six?
No.
Supposed to be eighty, eighty piece?
There's an estimated eighty thousand salaries. Total.
We aren't making utilities, right?
Motion to allow the abatement to continue.
I still have the water meter.
Yeah, I'll second. Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, no intention. I was thinking the same thing, yeah. Well, it's where the drought. Yeah, wait, wait till we get that hundred-year rain, we'll have little kids floating down market.
Can I pick which one?
We can make bands now.
Oh, and then I just have five minutes from May first and May fifteenth, if you wanna.
Motion to for.
I just made this one.
No, I have four. There are just multiple copies, but.
I know, so those two people are blessed.
The month previously.
That's terrible.
I told you guys top down.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you wrapped up.
Yes, yes, I'm done. That's terrible. It's just, I drove through, Teddy and I drove through this afternoon.
You ready?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have you read a couple of ordinance violations also.
Okay.
So, just wanna make sure it gets out to the public.
Sure, um, so as far as ordinance violations, our next court date's July eleventh. We have approximately thirteen set that day. Of those thirteen, Bill and I have been working together, four of them have become compliant at this point. So we have additional nine that are non-compliant still at this point. But that's our next big day of ordinance violations, and then we have some more on July eighteenth and September fifth. As far as ordinances go, if you're cited with an ordinance violation, if you are able to get it compliant and you're non-reoffender, we've been willing to work with them as far as that. If, if you're a re-offending person, we're most likely gonna ask for the penalty to be imposed. And that penalty allows for fines not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars, and they can be imposed per day. So it really would benefit them not to be re-offending. And that's up to the judge's discretion on entering the fines. There are a couple of ordinances we wanna bring to everybody's attention. Animals creating a nuisance, no enter, no owner shall fail to exercise proper care and control of his or her animals to prevent them from becoming a public nuisance. Excessive continuous or untimely barking, molesting a passerby, chasing vehicles, habitual attacking of other domestic animals, trespassing on school grounds, or trespassing upon private property in such a manner as to damage the property, shall be deemed a nuisance, which leads to the penalty I just talked about. There's also one for restraining or impounding animals. All dogs and cats shall be kept under restraint, unrestrained dogs or cats may be taken by police and impounded in animal shelter, in their confined and humane manner. Impounded dogs and cats shall be kept for not less than three days unless reclaimed by their owner. Dogs and cats not claimed by their owners within three days or placed in, or placed in a suitable new home may be humanely euthanized by an agency delegated to receive animals by the town. So those are two animal-related ordinances that people need to be aware of. As everybody knows, that the property ordinance that most likely is being cited to is the nuisance ordinance. That involves anything from keeping your grass mowed, to not having vehicles on your property that aren't properly cleaned, to having your house, having broken windows, or decaying siding, or things of that nature, root holes in your roofs that would allow critters inside of it. Generally, just cleanliness of the property. Again, if, if people get this cleaned up and keep it cleaned up, it's not our desire to have to fine everybody. But when some of these people have been re-offending for months and months on end, at this point, some of them were at the point where we're just having fines put in place. Some of them have been fined up to twenty-five hundred dollars, and still haven't cleaned it up, so they're gonna be fined another twenty-five hundred dollars. But it gets to a point where you have enough fines on your property that you can foreclose a lien on the property, and ownership can be transferred out of people's names. So it's not a, it's not a solution to those people to just not clean up the property, unless they don't wanna have ownership of the property. But as it stands currently, like I said, the next court date, there'll be nine hearings unless they get the matters resolved. If they get it resolved, they should contact Rockville PD and let them know it's resolved, so they can investigate. Generally, as I was telling Roger when he was here, I'm the town board's attorney, not the attorney for the town. So if you have issues related to property and things like that, you have two options, or three really. Come to the hearing, I'll talk to them at the hearing, talk with Bill or his officers, or come to the town meetings. Generally, I don't maintain office hours for ordinance violations, that's, I, I would never get anything done on a given day if I did that. So those are the three ways to kinda, if you're cited with the ordinance violation, try to correct the behavior. Either contact RPD, contact the board, or come to your hearing date. That's all I had, any questions on any of that?
What, what's the height on the grass, I'm sorry, James? I'm sorry?
Six inches.
Six inches, I was asked, and I, I, I didn't know, I said, I'll find out, so six inches.
And reminder not to blow your grass into the street either, so.
Would you comment again, I know we had this conversation, but because I had a phone call today, just to make it clear to people that we are not a mowing business.
We are not.
I had a lady call and said, hey, I, I was told that the town would mow my yard, I'd like to know how much that would cost.
We will not, we will fine you up to twenty-five hundred dollars per day for your violation.
The ongoing could be a lien against the property as well.
It could be, and if it gets to a fifty percent ownership interest in the property, the town could own your property, if the town chose to.
Thank you.
So, in the past, I know that mowing's been a thing, but at this point, it's just not an option, and it just, it reaffirms bad behavior, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for explaining that, Mary. I should take care of the chatter experts and attorneys out there, so.
Right, and just so we're clear, that ordinance violations aren't determined by the town board, they're issued by Rockville Police Department. And determinations on settlement cases are also not determined by the town board, it's determined by the Rockville Police Chief and myself, and whether or not you've been a re-offender. So it's not related to town board, town board members, not town board employees. It's a determination by law enforcement that you violated statute to prohibit certain behaviors.
And just so you know, I stand behind our police working on this too, so. Just so you guys here have a question.
Yeah, where are the local ordinances posted, is that online?
AmericanLegalPublishing.com, you search for Town of Rockville, and it will have the ordinances. AmericanLegalPublishing.com. And then you have to search under the town name. And they're available to the public. We're also not a researching and copying agency, so it's not fair to ask the clerk treasurer to research and copy your ordinances, she also has other things to do with it. But we have posted them publicly, and anybody with the internet has access to them. Or the library also has an internet where you can have access to them. And again, the desire isn't to fine everybody, or to put liens on the property, it's just to maintain everybody's property in a slightly manner, so it's fair to their neighbors and the public, so.
So you said something about clearing up the issue, how do you know what the issue is, actually?
Which issue?
Well, I mean, I, I got, I got two violations for weeks, I cut my grass.
Okay.
And actually had my mower actually broken, but. And actually had my mower actually broken, but they kinda mostly got my grass cut, and I got my weeds for weeds. So I'm a little curious as to, how many weeds is too many weeds, was it the weeds up next to my house that I didn't get to yet?
So those determinations are made by the officer citing you for the ordinance violation. But usually in an ordinance violation, there ain't no notation as to what the violation is.
That summons me to the court.
Right.
It says a weed violation.
Right, and so...
My little baffled is, how many weeds do I actually have to have before I start getting it? Or is it really too long? It's right in the middle of the spring where the dandelions pop up, you know, like the day after you cut, so...
So what they were probably citing to is the length of your property as far as the grass, and also typically weeds are taller than six inches tall. What that ordinance does is require you to timely maintain your property if you live within town limits. So without having the pictures of the property in front of me, I can't tell you exactly what it was. I will tell you that if you were cited for it, there were pictures taken at the time.
Okay, so how do we resolve it without having to go to court? I mean, it seems to me a little bit excessive that, you know, since they're there taking pictures, there's all this effort going on, but I don't see a lot of coordination with the police department to actually handle these things so you can actually know what's going on. I mean, to me, it seems, and I'm not the only one, I might be the only one here today, but certainly I've talked to a bunch of people on town. You know, I thought the police were supposed to kinda work hand in hand with us, but I get a summons about it. There's no ticket on there. I know my grass was cut, so yeah, I might have had some weeds, but in the yard itself...
Well, so I now have that in front of me, I can tell you that the surrounding property around the thing was definitely not six inches tall.
Oh, one section right in the middle, and so I got, I got this, this is one property right here.
Right.
And this property here is actually a second property. I got two tickets on both properties.
Well, I would assume there's other pictures besides just that one picture that would indicate that.
My point is, is that I'm getting summons for these things, which if they would actually write down what it is and communicate with us, I wouldn't have to, number one, go to court. You said something about reconciling it, I have no way of knowing what exactly they were complaining about with the second one.
Well, I just told you the process, if you were listening previous to your comment, about the three ways you can go about reconciling issues. Come to the town board meeting, come to the hearing, or talk to the Rockville Police Department, are the three options. If you do any of those three options, as you did today thankfully, you can get idea of how to reconcile things.
Yeah, that's, that's why I showed up.
So...
Number one, I don't know what one of them means, but number two, on the weeds, when I was, you know, I got weeds in the middle, that's one property. I got it on both properties.
Right, so I would assume...
And I know I cut the grass. I was out of town, and that's when they came by and flagged me. And I had cut the grass in less than five days. Yeah, I had some of those long weeds, but it's right in the middle when it's raining every darn day practically. So I just, to me, it seems a little adversarial that I have to, I have to come do this, and I have to go to court. When, I mean, and I, I'm not trying to be a nuisance, I'm not trying to be a problem, but I'd like to be worked with, you know? And obviously, if they had that level of effort to do it, how about a notice saying what's going on? How about actually talking to the end users? You know, these are, these are people that actually are in the village.
So what kind of a notice do you want?
I'd least like to know what's going on in a warning, and I'm gonna have another, another complaint, so... You know, I'm a little more agreeable when, when it don't feel like, you know, if it were tiki-tack or those kinds of things, you know, I kinda get it, I mean, you guys gotta do, it's a tough balance here. But four tickets, then I actually get my trailer taken off my property too. And I looked up the law on this one, and this one actually says, now, I know the officer over there stopped by and told me that, uh, that it wasn't licensed. So I went and looked up the law, and it doesn't state that you have to have a license on there. And that the police officers get to determine whether or not it's abandoned. Well, if it's actually on my property, shouldn't they consult me to see if it's abandoned? I mean, you know, and like I said, I'm not here to piss and moan about every little thing, is that I feel like you're getting a little tiki-tack here. And so I've been asking a lot of people around town, you know, is this normal? 'Cause I don't recall this actually happening this way before. And I actually remember, maybe it was just long enough ago where people used to talk to each other when they had issues. You know, now I get a flood of paperwork and bureaucracy? I mean, that's, that's, I don't think that's the exposure you're looking to put on the people of the town. And I understand, everybody's having those little bit of problems, but you know, are we here to get along?
Well, so ordinances are meant to be regulations, just like anything like speed limits, or drug violations, or laws that prevent murder, battery, things of that nature. The reason they're published online, and have been since before I was the attorney, was so people had a way to have public access to them.
Yeah, and actually look on the Rockville site for it.
Well...
I don't see any link off of this.
I'm not gonna interrupt you, so I hope you won't interrupt me.
My apologies.
If you Google "Rockville town ordinances," it actually brings up the American Legal Publishing site. A simple Google search, "Rockville town ordinances" will. Or if you call Town Hall, you know, we do have them, there's a binder up here at the front desk for them that have those in there too. But it's not any different than criminal laws, or traffic laws, or anything else. The prosecutor's not required to notify you that you're gonna be charged of murder prior to charging you of murder. That's not how the law works. Generally, if you live in town, you have a certain set of ordinances you have to follow by. Some, some places require you to hide different things, you know, you can't have your air conditioner out front, or you can't do these different things. Chicago does a lot of things that way. But the fact that you don't know it's not the law isn't a defense to not knowing it's not the law. You're responsible for it regardless of whether you know you are or not. Having said that, like I was saying earlier, generally if you're a first-time offender, it's never happened before, we work with you generally, a lot of times it's not a fine if you timely clean up the property. If it's over and over again, and we've seen you six or seven times, or even a couple times, yeah, likelihood is you're gonna get a fine. The Indiana Code does address seizure of unplated and uninsured and things like that. There's a home rule statute in the Indiana Code that allows for towns to govern their own provinces as far as those type of things. So while you might not find it in the Indiana Code stating this or that as far as what can be seized, it does give towns the authority to pass ordinances that regulate things within their jurisdiction.
Are you referring to the, the non-tagged?
Right. And generally, they tag them, and they wait a period of time before they actually take anything off the property. So it's not like they immediately just take it the same day that they tagged it. That's not how they operate.
But Indiana Code does state it has to be prominent. And when I actually find the sticker saying that they actually took it in my yard after it's already been taken, then it makes it a little bit difficult to actually say that was prominent when it was in my yard.
Well, we don't have a duty to sit there and make sure it stays on the item that's taken.
The original...
Or on the porch, or things of that nature. But if you want to, we can come, you can come to court and dispute the violation, and the judge can determine whether or not he thinks you violated the code. You have that right.
I, and I, I respect that, thank you.
So, Mr. Soder, if I may, reference your grass, Mr. Penninger. If it is in compliance now and you contact us, absolutely, we'll come out there and look at it, go, yes it is, or no it isn't, talk about why it isn't. If it is, it's a simple email to Mr. Soder's office that, in this case, Mr. Penninger, property is in compliance, please dismiss, whatever charge, and it's done, taken care of, and the story right there. That's how it gets resolved.
Okay, that's good.
Reference your trailer that was taken. State statute does define a vehicle as any conveyance to be pulled on a public highway. End of story, has to be plated by the definition of abandoned vehicle. That's why it was. Now, the fact that it may have blown off of the hitch of the trailer when I put it on there, that's not my problem, and they're bright orange. And was there for five days prior.
That's our notification though, is if I don't have a chance to see it, then it's not prominent if you put it somewhere where it's gonna blow away. That, that's my problem, is, is...
We're allowed to post them on doors, or on trailers, or on cars, it's common practice in the legal field to do those things.
Do what?
You can post them on doors, cars, trailers, it's common practice in the legal field to post in those ways. In fact, they actually recommend those type of postings.
Moreover, like the reference about the grass, and you said people said, well, this hasn't been common. I can tell you that the law on nuisance properties that pertains to grass weeds, dilapidated buildings, has been passed in local ordinance since nineteen eighty-four. Now, I'm sorry, the past thirty-nine years, it may have not been enforced to the level that it is now, but that doesn't mean that it can't be, or shouldn't be.
Well, and I can also tell you that when I came to be the attorney in two thousand eighteen, we had nineteen nuisance violations. So it's not that we weren't enforcing ordinances. I mean, there's been nineteen, there's been eight, seven, ten, different numbers, different years. But it's something that people should be aware of, that these ordinances are in place. And Park County Chatter seems to be very aware that they're in place, so anybody has that on Facebook. But like I said, again, it's not a desire to fine everybody, it's just a desire to get everybody being conformed, conforming to the standards that the town has passed, for your neighbors' benefits also. So like I said, I don't know you, and I haven't seen your name on ordinance violations before, so that would be one of those ones you got to notice, call the Rockville Police Department, come to the town like you are now. And those are things where we can work together and resolve the issues, as long as everything's been cured. But the hope is that people will reach out, and they will solve whatever the problem is.
Go ahead, if you'd like to talk about your trailer, the other issue with it, I would love to discuss that with you if you're more inclined to do so.
Not today, but I would.
Go ahead.
Okay, so that's fine with that explanation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just was surprised there was no link off of the Rockville on the other sites, so, for that. So I didn't actually take a look, but in very limited time, so I knew you guys knew the answers, I figured at least we'll start with that. So I appreciate that.
It's always a good, good start to have a conversation.
To the town's website, that they put a link to the, what ordinances on it.
Yeah.
By the way, they don't have this listed where this is actual what they either.
You are probably referring, we're in the transition of our old website to our new website, which is a state website. I'm working with the IT guy, that all of our, the old website, there's not a whole lot of information on there. The new website will eventually at some point be loaded with multiple items. American Legal Publishing will be on that website as well. I'm working with the IT guy to redirect, so anybody that goes to our old website will actually be redirected to the new website, and then we can begin building those tabs. So we're in a transition period, we're working on it. It does take time, but American Legal Publishing has always been out there. Like our attorney had stated, you can go directly to that website, or you're welcome to come in the office, and you can sit down and go through the book as well.
Or link all the police department. I guess what it's, uh, just saying, I don't, I don't even know what's true, right? No, I didn't look up American Legal, but I probably would have not known this that was officially decided.
We actually send those to that American Legal Publishing, those are official ordinances.
It's not posted, so...
So when ordinances are passed, the statute requires we publish them in the local paper also. So any ordinance that's incurring a fine upon people when passed gets published in the paper as well. And it's discussed in this public meeting, which are now broadcast. So, uh, so there's a lot more transparency than a decade ago was, probably. But yeah, things can always get better.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I didn't have anything else, I'm listening by heading questions for me.
You ready, bro? Thanks, man.
So we had had some of our Wi-Fi devices shut off, and in the process, we had to switch out two of the SIM cards. They left two of them on, so we were actually getting billed for four Mi, or two extra Wi-Fi devices, and we needed an extra Wi-Fi device anyway because of the new car. So they shut one of the Wi-Fi devices off, and credited us for the extra set of Wi-Fi devices that we no longer needed for... We have two vehicles that have the new tablets installed into the cars, the Tahuhs, that are actually using the new computers. We should be picking up the, two of the new vehicles on Friday.
Are they decal yet, Bill, or are they gonna be?
Yeah.
Okay.
And actually, while I was cruising, talked to Mike Olson, they're starting it out, fitters, uh, in Lafayette. And he, when they print their decals, it's just all one layer. So you've got, like with the ones we have currently, with the multiple layers, it's easier for them to put more on. They don't last as long. And the price that he gave me, the rough estimate's gonna be about what, freaking past?
Okay.
It's gonna be one layer instead of multiple layers.
So I understand here that Olson is dealing, selling vehicles now for the, he's in the program for vehicles, police?
Yes, and he's, uh, just like we did with Ford, he's gonna be doing kinda the same thing, where we can order them and have them outfitted.
Can he get any brand, just Chevy?
I would, I don't wanna speak for him on that, I don't know if he can or not.
Just curious, curious, I'm getting off track. Yeah, no. Okay, so, where we at?
He was giving his report.
Yeah.
So Nelson's was five thousand, forty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. That's been since two thousand nineteen where we weren't billed like we should have been. I'd asked for a couple things last year that you guys approved, and they never billed us in a timely manner, so that five thousand dollars is accumulation of, from two thousand nineteen on for this year. So it's definitely more than we budgeted for because...
Did they provide all the documentation?
Yes, and I went through and that's wrong, and sent it back, and that's why it's taken us a while, because I've kept going back and forth and saying, "No, you guys delete this," they'll give it back, no, that's still on there. So it was a long process of getting them to take stuff off, like they were charging us for the patches that we'd already paid for.
Is there any other company used besides Nelson's?
So Stephen R. Jenkins up in Indianapolis, we can order our shirts from them, and they'll sew on the patches.
Guys, hey guys, excuse me, Bill, guys, if you want, go outside, please, if you wanna talk, we're trying to conduct business here, and it's... Thank you. Okay, Bill.
But we can go to Stephen R. Jenkins, and they'll actually, for the shirts, they'll sew the patches on. For the pants, we can get straight from Amazon, so there are other alternatives out there besides...
Okay.
We're not dealing with them anymore, right?
No.
Yeah, okay.
But they are, in my opinion, they just, they can't handle the task.
Yeah, apparently, there's problems there.
We, when we first looked at getting the new vehicles, we found out that we had an issue with the Tahuhs as far as the brakes, brake pads, rotors. We bought four rotors that we were confirmed that, hey, these are gonna fit your Tahuhs. We didn't try them on right away because we weren't ready to replace them. We are now finding out that those that we were told fit do not fit, and they will not take them back as it's past the thirty days. So I'd like to either get with Doug and see if any of those fit his, and if not, I'd like permission to sell those, and at least try and recoup some of the money out of them with...
Makes sense.
Any vendor that's gonna give us...
Something.
Something's better than nothing, right?
Right.
Would Olson maybe, Tahuhs or Chevys or anything?
Yes.
They might, uh, we can certainly check with them. I know, like Double D, and NKP, and places like that could also be willing to purchase them, so we can talk with all of them, see if they're interested.
We don't need to bid, do we?
No, but it'd be good for him to have the authority to act.
Okay, well, one second.
Swords you buy those at?
Think they were California Online, wasn't it?
Was that the California?
Yeah.
I can't remember the company name, but I can give you all the documentation of what we paid for them, and when they were purchased.
That's pretty nice even, that they send you their own parts.
They'll take them back.
Seems like it was last summer, wasn't it?
Last fall.
Last fall, 'cause we were in the process of deciding on, do we need to get rid of these Tahuhs or not? Because we couldn't find any pads or anything for them at that time, you know, we thought we found them.
So we got a motion second out here. So we have a motion and a second.
Sorry. Got it rambling on, I couldn't hear this sound.
Sorry.
Are those half tons?
I would say they are, most times they are.
Ian's got them in his office, so he'd be able to...
Well, I mean, check with Allen on that, but, I mean, we got three quarter nut now, the new ones are old enough, probably not, but check with him, just in case.
Front brakes are huge, so it's not your standard. Okay, we've got statistics. In May of 2023, we had eight hundred and seventy-two calls. In 2022, we had four hundred and twelve.
Why is it up, well, what's up so much here, Bill?
Well, we had a lot of ordinance violations.
Okay, the ordinance issues, yeah. Yeah, well, a year ago, I mean, I'm just looking.
Domestics are really up, aren't they?
Domestics have been up.
Yeah. Well, anyway, busy.
Two thousand seven hundred and forty-one for the year so far. Last year, for the entire year, we had four thousand two hundred and seventy-one, so we're, we're, I would say over halfway, and we're not quite halfway through the year yet, almost, but. Had twenty-six cases, forty-seven last year, hundred and thirty-one total this year, four hundred and twenty-eight last year. I will say that we started a new numbering system, and I don't know if that's, we may have to revamp our numbering system for case numbers. Had eleven violent cases this year, ten last, sixty-one total this year, a hundred and forty-three last. Crashes, six this year, four last year, twenty-one total this year so far, eighty last year. We had nine towed vehicles this year, six last year, fifteen so far this year, and forty-seven last year. Three incidents this year, nine last year, twelve total this year, fifty-five last year. Had one arrest this month, twenty-four last year. Forty-one total this year, and a hundred and sixty-six total last year. Traffic stops, eighty-seven this year, a hundred and forty-one last year. Two hundred and sixteen total this year, one thousand one hundred and eighteen last year. Now, one thing I want to point out about that is, we had Sintley, or OPO, as you probably heard it called. So we had a lot more traffic stops, and some of those arrests are most likely gonna be like driving while suspended prior, which we drummed a lot of those up when we're doing operation pullover. So now that we haven't done that this year, some of those numbers have gone down.
They still out there, though. Poor Ian, okay.
ECWS entries, a hundred and twenty-two this year and last, three hundred and nine total this year, eight hundred and sixty-two last year, one felony this year, or this month, six last year, thirty total this year, forty-five last. Five misdemeanors this month, six, thirty-seven last year. Fifty-two total this year, two hundred and two last, eighteen infractions, thirty-eight last year, sixty-one total this year, two hundred and seventy-three last year. Ordinance violations, a hundred and four this year, a hundred and eleven last year, we don't have any info on the totals. Warnings, there were fifty-nine this year, this month, a hundred and fifteen last year. Two hundred and eighteen the total this year, and eight hundred and sixteen last year. Ordnances were not in the ECWS, that's our, how we write our tickets on the computer, in the squad cards. That was, the ordinances were not in there last year, that's something that was done this year to make the process of doing ordinance violations go a lot faster.
Yeah, it used to be they'd write them, they'd post them on the door, then they'd give them to me, and then I'd have to draft something, and we'd send them out by certified mail or repost them on the door. Now they're able to sign a court date when they assign the violation, so it makes it easier for us to not have all the extra legwork to do. And it also saves you guys the expense of certified mailing for the ordinance violations too. So now when they're issuing them, they're giving them court dates. And at the first court date, I usually talk with them and try to resolve the case.
So that's what he was referring about, basically, when he got sight to the notice on his whatever.
Says you have court on this day.
It had a court date, so, so, but they can resolve that long before.
That's why I was saying in my report that we've resolved four of them already, and they're gonna be dismissed, and they won't have to.
Be at Mule Yard, or Tag the Vehicle, or Trailer, whatever, it's that.
Just become compliant. He usually gives them some time before you ever even sends them to me before they come.
Usually what I do is I'll knock on the door, if they answer, I'll talk to them, probably get yelled at for a few minutes, and then after they've calmed down, I'll talk to them, explain to them, these are the deficiencies in your yard, you can correct these in sixty days, I'll ask Nick to dismiss it. If not, if you're showing some sort of progress, then I'll talk to him, see if we can get an extension. If you're not, then we're just gonna, you know, send it on through the process.
Right.
I do try and talk to everybody, unfortunately, not everybody's always home, and if they're not home, we don't just sit on that, we put it on the door.
Right.
Sometimes you get some people that aren't very happy about it, but, you know, we have to.
That's their due notice, they get it fixed. I mean, it doesn't mean they have to go to court.
Right.
They just have to.
Get it fixed.
Fix it.
Right.
Okay.
I think sixty days is adequate notice.
Well, thanks, Bill, appreciate all the work you're doing with the violations, I know some people don't like them, but the majority of people like what you're doing.
I have a question I'd like to ask.
Yes.
How often do you encounter fentanyl in Rockville?
I have, I have encountered it a little bit. I don't necessarily encounter it in physical form so much as in the person. Like I arrested a lady that was high on methamphetamine, she could just tell by the way she was acting. But when she wasn't tweaking, she was passed out. And usually that's gonna be a combination of meth and fentanyl. We've had some people that we've got for meth, and then sent it to the lab, and it's tested positive for both meth and fentanyl. And we've had some people that OD on, probably, you know, yeah.
More than you would think.
They weren't in this county, but they were, they were getting that, we believe, from the same place that some of the people coming out here are getting that.
Want to talk about Wolfcom?
Yes.
Yeah.
Park, hang on, just one second, before you move on to the statistics, and just a question from the police commission. These statistics, you know, which is great to have, I mean, between Bill and Ian and Cameron, they do a great job. Because of the, you're often dispatched to assist the Park County Sheriff's Department. Does that, is that, that statistic, that call, if Chris is called, and you're dispatched to help Chris, and it's a domestic, is that stat for both Park County and RPD, or?
So it is gonna be for both of us, because we're both there. I mean, their county's gonna track theirs, we're gonna track ours. But if we go to a domestic, whether it's assisting or not, we're still going to a domestic.
Okay.
So.
Just curious, you know, how they would do that, because it has come up in conversation, catches conversation, you know, at Park County, I think, I think you're a full staff now, right, Chris, now?
Yeah.
And so, but before that, you know, RPD is out there and assisting Park County quite often, and you're reversed for that? No, it's a matter of mutual aid.
Well, it's mutual aid, it's.
And all that, so the statistics prove it out, that, you know, you're both doing the job.
Actually, the mutual agencies, the only way that we can not assist them is if we don't have the resources, or if the town board were to enact a ordinance or resolution saying that we're not going to assist.
That'd be rude.
Otherwise, we're required to assist them. Again, my question, if it's not based on policy, it's based on.
Assistant under agency and a domestic?
Well, it is counted twice, but they're.
Well, it's officer of two different.
But it's two different categories.
Departments, so both should be counted as a call to show your activity, I mean, makes logical sense to me.
And it wasn't a question on the policy itself, it was a question on the statistics.
Right, I'm just trying to inform.
Get it off, let's go on to Wolfcom.
All right.
Here we go.
We can go on.
So, okay. Up to you, Dave.
No, 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 one more inside, but now, look at this, I've been calculating numbers and looking at, well, anyway, so go ahead, have a court.
So I sent you guys an email with two different prices.
Yes, we're running out of space, is your point?
We have just under one terabyte left.
Yeah.
We got these at the end of 2019.
Mm-hmm.
So that's not very long ago, we had six terabytes.
Yeah, forty-one months, and we've used almost all of it, you're using point one three four one terabytes per month. So that's, in sixty months, five years, that'd be eight point zero terabyte. So you got two options here, I mean, which one did you prefer? Eight terabytes, if at the current rate, we'd use eight in sixty months, so a twelve terabyte contract, twenty-three thousand, do you think that's okay? Do you think we need to eliminate it for another five point three thousand?
So a couple things, one, I will say, the twelve might last, but if we continue to keep getting busier and busier, we're going to keep having more and more video.
Yeah.
Figure out what comes after terabytes.
Yeah.
But. The other thing is, with the online one, we can set up a guest.
Okay, that one's online, right?
Right. And with that one, we can set up a thing so that the prosecutor's office can actually log in and download all the video, and then we don't have to put it on a thumb drive and take it over there, they have immediate access to it.
That's nice, what, is this all do at once?
So they'll finance it, so you're looking at, if you do the, the unlimited, which I believe was close to thirty thousand.
Yeah.
That would probably be about seven thousand dollars a year. If you pay for it all at once, then obviously there's no finance charge.
Right.
And then the twelve would probably be about five thousand a year if it's financed.
What's the financing rate?
I haven't got the quote on that yet.
You're just getting us prepared for, well, we're gonna run out by, by, twelve, we're gonna run out.
So we're getting ready to get billed for another year, and that's, I believe, gonna be one thousand four hundred dollars approximately.
So we're financing it now, or do we just, we're?
We're just paying a maintenance agreement.
Paying a maintenance agreement, okay.
A user agreement so that we can go in and upload videos and use their system. Now, if we get a new system, what they'll do is give us a password, an account.
Yeah.
So we can download it from their system, so if we need a copy of the video, we can get it, but we can no longer upload to the system.
It doesn't make sense to me.
What we're paying for is the upload.
You only have six point seven months left at the current rate.
So we probably need to switch that.
Well, we need to.
Because we don't want to pay that.
Yes.
Maintenance thing, and then have us run it in six months.
Have you taken this to your, your?
Commission.
Commission, is it?
I have not yet, I just got the information.
We need on the twenty-nine.
Right.
Well, although we are the budgetary body, I don't know, do you, most of you are here. Do you want to discuss this in your meeting, or not?
I'm of a mind, Sandy, but, you know, I mean, it's what he needs.
Yeah.
Video takes a lot of stuff, videos are absolutely.
Essential.
So we still would pay the service agreement, no matter which plan we went with?
Right.
The annual service agreement.
Does it overlap if you don't use it all, is it, does it overlap?
You mean the.
The current one that we have.
The current one we have, so right now, it's basically just like you have a computer or a thumb drive, and you're filling it up. So once we no longer have that user agreement, we can no longer add to that thumb drive, or hard drive, whatever you want to call it. Though we can still take away from it, we just can't add to it because we don't have that user agreement.
So if you add to it, and you have some left for the next year, does that go forward, that's what I'm asking.
So like, if we get the twelve terabyte for five years, and we don't, we're not gonna use all twelve terabytes the first year, that's gonna be for the entire five years, we have five years to fill that twelve terabytes up. Or if we go with the unlimited, then we don't have to worry about it, we just put all of it on the.
Cloud.
Cloud, and then we can access it, the download's supposed to be a little bit better, we get new cameras, the.
How much more is the unlimited, because I'm.
It's five point, well, the twelve versus the unlimited is five point three thousand over five years.
For the unlimited, just my opinion.
Well, yeah, I'm convinced, I like the cloud aspect of it, it makes it very, very accessible to prosecutor. What do you folks?
Well, the user agreement, though, still, what's it, in June or July then?
Is June, they're sending me, I think, June ninth, I'm supposed to get an email on the user agreement to rename.
So even if we get the user agreement, then it doesn't matter which plan we're on, right? So if we budgeted to put it and purchase the upgrade in January on the new budget, that user agreement would still go through June of next year, we would just switch plans in January, so we could, we could budget it for next year, and purchase it.
We can.
Well, we're gonna run out here.
Six point seven months, so that's right at the end of December.
Well, that's at the current usage rate.
Try to cut down on time.
Well, we have a few months.
Wait till January.
I guess monitor your usage if you think you're gonna, of course, it'll be close. So what, when will you, what would you like to do?
I would like to go with the online version, I think there's a lot of benefits to that. It would be nice to be available for the prosecutor if we're not available for them.
Well, what timeframe are you thinking?
I was thinking January, I'd like to contact them, and we might use what we've got left.
All right.
Put it in the budget, and go with, I'll make a motion.
Do we have to make a motion now? We probably don't have to now.
Not till we start budgeting.
Well, thanks, Bill.
Yay, we should be next month.
Is that all you got, Bill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Maybe you should go rescue your.
Yeah, you better go get Ian, I feel bad for him. But they won't get loud. I was just like, come on. Very.
All right.
Okay, where we at?
Hey, we've been busy, obviously, Memorial Week, guys were real busy, everything got mowed, take care, we is a long week. We had four water leaks that were repaired, so we were really busy. So we've been working on water leaks, we've got some water taps, the electric department's able to get Boozen Park Park, the tree out of there, and that.
Yeah, you know, Tordon, have I mentioned Tordon?
Yes, we got it, we got it all mixed up, and we're.
Well, no, that's, you're thinking round up and, crossbow.
Yeah, crossbow, we got crossbow better.
No, when you cut a tree, and you don't want that tree to ever come back, you get this stuff called Tordon, and put it around, you have to do it right after you cut it.
Do you have to, do you have to have like a license to handle it?
Well, don't get in the water, probably shouldn't, you get a point, I don't know.
Well, that's.
There's stuff on there about how far it should be.
Tree there, we took the root and everything out.
Well, I know you guys cut all that down, I thought one of these, and the Tordon, you know.
Are you supposed to buy that stuff?
Yeah, it's.
You have to be, you can't.
Exactly.
So where you gonna get trees?
How you buy it? I farmed for a few years, folks, I have my.
Oh, you kept your applicator's license?
Yeah.
Don't you have to renew it?
Oh, my God, yeah, every five years. But there, where he's talking about seeing the creek there on.
But yeah, anyway, it looks good.
Yes, it does.
Clear it back.
Makes it easier to go, to see one around that corner. I would like to get a few more out this fall, plus that tree right on edge is a really nice story.
Yeah. Well, I wonder why you left that one.
That, I mean, somebody, I can't believe somebody hit it.
I mean, I haven't hit it, been driving by for thirty, forty years.
So. The pads for the meter at the parking lot are done, for the left pads and everything. And the question there, which we may have talked about it a little bit, is on the electric conduit we're getting ready to put in. Which only goes so far, and then we're gonna be in the hole where they need to pour their concrete. If they go all the way to that hole, then they won't be able to dig it, like, so we're either gonna have to dig the hole for them, or they're gonna have to come in and do.
The hole, which hole?
For the lights in the parking lot.
Oh, the lights.
So that was a question. Do we hold off on the conduit until, or are we want us to dig the holes?
Well, good question, in bits, but the light poles are in bits, buts.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're just doing, we're gonna run the water line and electric, so that was, we're gonna start doing that this week, he's wanting to start on that. So.
Is that our question, is that a Roger question?
If you drill the holes, are they, I mean, so what would the process be?
Well, we would have to, like I said, get with the engineer and find out, or somebody who's gonna do it, how deep they want that. And everything, then they would have to come in and, of course, set it, because it's gonna have to be set at a certain level, you know, and we obviously don't have all that information, so.
Or you hold off on the conduit until they dig the holes?
Yeah, because we can't, if we hold back, like we talked about today, then you're gonna have to take everything out, you're still gonna have wires sticking up out of the ground, just not what it's supposed to be, be dug back up, and.
My only issue with waiting is, obviously, we want to get some blacktop on that.
Exactly, yeah, well, that's just, so, I guess, the question, we, I just contacted Roger. So I find a depth, and maybe we go ahead and dig it for them.
I mean, I can sure we shoot your grate and all that. Use the.
Would it?
Sonic tubes on it.
Yeah, the light poles and all that, where it's getting the conduit, and the wires.
So like, how deep, wouldn't be in there?
That's, well, we could look, like I said, we had Luke out there spotting, so we know where it can go.
So are the pads ready for the chargers?
No, that, this is just for the meter that they talked to you about, we've got them all poured and set, everything.
When are we doing the charging stations?
Do it, when? So that's our, hey, Rick, thought, all we were doing was getting the wire to it.
That's all we were doing, so are we waiting on info? Darn it, we should have asked him that question.
Yeah.
Yeah, only Doug can ask.
Yeah, I can, I can call him right now. That's, that was an.
Luke Gill, you, you guys have a pin where they want those, right?
Yes. Yes, it's all marked. We know where we're going. It's just stipulation that they want us to go ahead and dig and not leave.
How, how big is the base for the lights?
I have not, I don't think it's really, I mean, it's not huge. I'm not exactly, I've not really set eyes on it.
Good, seventeen inches.
Probably something like that.
I don't know. I probably got it here somewhere. Uh, anyway, well, so you're gonna call Roger?
Yeah, I'll call, I'll call Roger and see what he has to say on it. That's the only drawback right now, but they, they've got the conduit. They're wanting to start this week.
Well, let's, by golly, let's go.
And everything so we can get on it.
It'll be dry.
Yeah, so.
Well, it's dry.
Question they wanted me to ask and then, um, that Michigan Street concrete is done. It's ready for milling. We shall be in the twelfth to mill.
Okay. It's getting paid.
It's getting paid. It'll be in, so the concrete work is fixed. And then along with that, we did the dog park pad for the bench.
Oh, okay.
So it's done and the bench has been placed back. So that is done. And, uh, and obviously the hydrant cemetery has been replaced and, uh, everything is backed on out there. So.
All twelve hydrants?
Yeah, I remember.
All of them. I made Teddy test them today. Made it out and everyone tested.
I lost count.
I don't believe me.
They all came in. But just to that point that you and I were there this morning, we talked to Adam. Adam's getting a count because some of them, I mean.
Yeah, some of them are really, really hard.
And so we're getting a count to get all new ones, new ones, not cheapos. And, uh, we'll get a price back to the cemetery board first and to you guys.
Since the nineteen forties, you had to know how to do that. You have to pump them and then wait and it comes.
I don't think you pump these.
No, so.
Well.
And then on the field station down there, uh, conversations back and forth and then with Brandy, we had a citizen come up, call me. So I approached about a quote and he approached me about, he is going to donate the block and the time and mortar to repair that. So that company, they hit, will only have to buy a door, which is gonna come in by over three thousand dollars. I've already contacted her. She is okay with that. We are going to get back with the guy that's gonna do it and find out where he wants the door purchased at. And I would like to purchase ourselves so we know that we are getting what the concrete guy wants.
Have you and Brandy talked about, uh, Mike Lewis had approached me about doing a credit card machine down there or something? Have you guys looked into that?
We have not. It's been brought up over the years before.
We haven't talked about it recently, but I think in probably the last two years it's been brought up.
I don't know what it would cost. I just don't know. I mean, that would kind of eliminate. I mean, if you're one job, it would be off your back, wouldn't it?
About ninety percent of the people pay.
Yeah, I was thinking that. At the time, I think it was a little costly.
Okay.
Um, but we can always look into it again and see, or we can reach out to the same company and see what.
Yeah, cause they was looking to like even coins at a car wash. And I think, like she said, they've been pretty expensive to get going. Is why they've never really attacked it, so. Do we have other trouble with them not paying that?
I don't know.
Well, I think it's just a fact.
I think it's too bad. I mean, we just bill them once a month, but, um, you know, every day, um, with the system that we have, you can pay your bill just exactly what we bill you. It's hard, it's hard to have a running credit on something like that, so.
We definitely listen to it. So then, um, this weekend, this Friday or Saturday is cleanup day. So I'll have, I'll be down there along with probably at least three or four of my guys. I know we got one house. We gotta go pick some stuff up. Our husband's handicapped and she is cold. And we got that written down. We will, I'm sure. I don't know if you've got any more.
Put that on our Facebook page about if, if somebody has things that need picked up or?
Yes, yeah. And it was in the paper either one or two weeks. Probably be in the paper again maybe this week.
It was in last week's.
Just to Brandy, if they, I'm, I'm sure you know this, but if they do contact you, we, we won't enter the house.
Right. I usually tell them that each day at the end of the driveway.
Yeah, this one is gonna be down by the garage.
Right by the garage.
So that's not, we'll, we'll go in a garage or something if we have to, but.
Yeah.
We won't interact.
Absolutely.
So that, that's Saturday from nine to twelve. So if any of you guys need to clean your property up before Bill comes over.
You can't take an air conditioner.
No, can't take, no electronics.
Yeah.
You have the tickets to disperse from the central solid waste.
Yeah, yeah. It's a segue here, perfect time. Uh, tox away day. Uh, uh, it's the next Saturday, the seventeenth. You can take your electronics there.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna hand them out.
Okay, go hand them out. Good.
Yes.
Good.
Didn't bring tasseled it?
No, there's one at the fairground.
Oh.
Yeah.
They're here in June and usually.
No, Chris and I insisted be at the fairgrounds. We got our meeting last, what, last week over there?
Yeah.
Had excellent, uh, what's it, chicken salad sandwich?
Oh, man, that was good.
Yeah, it was good. I know. Uh, some little, no, it was in a little, nine thirty town. They, they, they not doing it. Well, how come we don't get chicken salad sandwiches?
One other thing I really got to ask is on cleanup day for Memorial up to cemetery, it, the sign says seven days. Every year there's, the question comes up, do we count Memorial Day or do we count start Tuesday?
Yeah.
I think you don't count Memorial Day. However, so even things that are on the shepherd's hook, they get pitched?
We still, if it's on the hook or on the stone or in the can, we're not gonna take.
Mom and dad was, is gone. So somebody else took it?
We've not cleaned up yet.
Okay.
For Memorial.
Okay.
So if it's gone, then somebody's took it. So.
Letty.
What?
We have reviewed the rules. It's coming up in the next meeting. We've altered some of the rules. We've, uh, improved some of the rules, remade some of the rules. So we're gonna look at the, the, the nanny generosity type, repower the whole thing. Um, along with the new price increases.
I'm just saying, somebody took what was on the dead morning back shitter.
That wasn't.
There was a perch hook like riveting with you?
I'm sorry, I love that.
Anyway, the, the Memorial Day thing was, I think, under the circumstances of the past weekend, we thought it was better not to toast the bear.
Right.
Just extend it out a few more days. We'll go back to normal after that.
Okay.
So when do we wanna do it?
I don't know.
Yes. We got, we got support stuff when you get through here.
You've lost control with the come on ruling.
Well, I thought.
I'm fine.
For the end of the week or another week, but I just, I know it is posted one week, but I think for people that take fresh flowers out there, I mean, they can keep them alive longer than ticks or something.
Well, as long as they're on the hook, they're fine.
Yeah, I hate for anything to be thrown out that somebody just spent some money on.
It's just the stuff that's stuck in the ground that will be removed.
Yeah.
And, and again, those rules are gonna, he's gonna handle it very, very gingerly. I think you probably, you are all well aware of. The rules haven't been enforced to the letter anyway. Gotta ease into this. It's not a battle I'm on this fight, um, by myself.
We've got two bids we need to.
So anyway, after we pass Monday's meeting, we'll have a lot of information.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on, uh, a couple more things on the little bucket truck. The tires are shot on it. And they're eating the front tires up. So obviously there's something in the front end that is not right. So for six new tires and alignment at Burke Springs, we're looking at thirty-three hundred dollars. And, uh.
Okay.
We decided to get a price to them so they can not only put the tires on, they can have correct before we leave instead of trying to schedule something down the road.
I don't guess we have a choice, right?
So, yeah, I was asking for approval for that except.
Make a motion.
Back there.
So on that river.
Aight.
Obviously if they find something massive broke, that will positively change that. And then, um, of course, this is under my, uh, the price that I can approve, but I just thought I'd tell you the, the potential transformer, current transformer out of the water plant that went down, did get hit by lightning. And to get new ones in is two thousand ninety-five dollars. So we'll be getting that. And then the last thing is the skid steer curb broom, the broom on the front of that, the curb broom got broke a while back. And to repair that, just the curb broom is three thousand dollars. It, it doesn't do a lot. We can still operate the broom. So I, I personally, unless you just want it back on there, I, I don't see it's worth three thousand dollars.
So you're for three thousand dollars.
So you're, you're, you're still looking to get some, some quotes on, some appropriate size sweeper for the town?
Yeah, we, we'll definitely have to replace the big sweeper, especially with all the new roads and curbs coming in. So Alan's supposed to be working on talking and maybe going to see some of the newer style ones. We try and talk to towns instead of dealers so we can actually get.
Good idea.
What they do and go see what they do. Cause they're gonna tell us they're fantastic.
Exactly.
Of course.
How big is that? Is that a ton and a half, that small bucket truck?
I would say so, yes.
Five hundred years.
It's a.
I just wondered if anybody globally could, uh.
Yeah, it's a fifty-five hundred HD.
I know AKP can do one, one times.
Yeah.
My dump trucks are ton and a half. They done it. So.
Oh. Oh, here. Well, I can check with. I mean, I assume Alan didn't cause he probably didn't think they could.
Oh, I mean, it might be more checking.
Yeah, exactly. I, I will definitely give to them, I'll have Alan get them a call in the morning and if it's cheaper and they can do it in a time that we can definitely go with them. So I'll have that checked. No, I never did.
Anything else?
You guys, you guys gonna bring that?
I was just thinking, we had offered the previous liaison a take home truck, which she selected not. Is that maybe something we should? I mean, he can use the one, the most recent one, which I think was actually purchased like in sixteen? Was it nineteen?
I don't know. We bought two in nineteen. Yeah, you're right. That one's older.
Yeah, I think it's sixteen. Yeah, we bought it in sixteen.
I'm good with it.
He's basically on call all the time.
Yeah, it's okay.
We'll make a motion for that.
We'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
I mean.
You're not moving, are you?
No.
Not moving?
No.
It's not a long commute.
The next time they, I pack it, I'll move. Uh, I'll be out there.
Memory's armed.
Oh, yeah.
I'll just visit your grave.
Anyway.
Okay.
Brandy's got data on our project.
Let's go.
Okay, you can, uh, Doug already touched on the community crossings for our Michigan street, but I have the end of June. Is that next week or the end of June? Please remind me.
What's that?
The paving for Michigan.
Milling is next.
Milling.
Milling is June twelfth, what he said.
Yes.
When he called me, he's gonna be there, mill the June twelfth and I believe he talked like he would be paving.
So that is not the end of the month, it's actually next week.
Hang in there.
Um, the, we need to, the community crossings, uh, Anderson Walton Howard project as well as the Jackson Jack's parking lot. Those bin packets are ready that I sent out from Roger. I just, unless you had any differences on those, and I'll share those with Nick. It was pretty lengthy, but a lot of that stuff was just.
Oh, boy, it was.
Well, I've never seen, have we ever had a contract?
Like a hundred and fifty-six, no, it's something.
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred pages, that's.
Why, why would they send all that extra stuff?
I don't know, but I can piece it out and then I just need dates. So if we're ready to put that out to bid.
That's what.
The Anderson Walton Howard project needs to be out to bid within four months of April tenth. So I need a date on that pretty quickly.
How many before August?
It needs to be done, it needs to be bid out by August tenth.
It have to be under contract within four months of your work date.
Um, and yeah, so we want, we wanna get it out as soon as possible. I don't know if we can get the project done by the end of the year or before winter hits when we're gonna shut down the asphalt plants, but. Uh, so you need, you need.
Something July, probably early July.
Yeah.
Well, we need to, uh, well, we got, we got, you got dates here for us.
Need thirty days.
I can get it in the paper as early as next Wednesday for the first time.
Next Wednesday?
Uh-huh.
It should be the fourteenth.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And then we leave them open for thirty days, July fifth.
Leave it open till?
July twelfth. And when's our next July meeting after that?
I'd say we do that because we're looking pretty close to our August.
Yeah, as soon as we can get it out to bid best. So what's our dates?
So we'll advertise it June fourteenth, the next week's paper.
Uh-huh.
That'll be submitted. It's a thirty day.
Yep, so July twelfth would be thirty days. When's our next, or do we need?
Seventeen, no.
And then we do the award on the seventeenth.
We can take, we'll just take until the end of business day on one of those days there that works out, um, within that thirty time, day timeframe. And then our next meeting would be July seventeenth for our, correct?
Open bid.
And you good to do the parking lot as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same thing on that.
I think so.
Well, as far as parking lot, he sent out estimates. I don't know what everybody thinks about the cost. I don't know if everybody saw, but he had an asphalt estimate, he had a concrete estimate. I don't know what's in the bid specs, if he's asking for a quote on each. I don't know. I, 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 I.
In concrete, it's more expensive.
Yeah, but less.
Crazy, but it's definitely gonna stay long.
It'll last longer than.
You'll probably pave two and a half times as prepared to one life cycle of concrete, so. Yeah, what do you do? Uh.
Which breaks easier?
Well. Pavement. So I don't know. I, I, I don't know what's in the, I just see this as the, uh, bit, bit instruction to bidders. He gave two estimates. I don't know if he put them in the specs or not. Anyway, yeah, one was eighty-seven, seven, the other's one twenty-seven, eight.
Do you want to bid out for concrete or asphalt?
Huh?
What do you want to bid out?
Well, that's what I'm asking, I guess.
Concrete. I don't think the difference is astronomical.
This parking lot?
Yeah. What?
It's gonna be pretty steep and.
Yeah.
I think so.
He had estimates.
Oh, yeah, but with what you're parking in, I mean, you're not gonna be parking like heavy.
Oh, no, no, you know.
So you might do it right with the pavement just because it's gonna be regular vehicles, not like, you're not gonna like.
I just wanted to see what the cost difference was. Uh, you know, you don't know until you bid it. One may come in.
Right.
Make them closer. Anyway, regardless of that, I'm not gonna hold this thing up. Let's just get, we got our bid dates, right?
Yeah.
Well, it's a good point. There's nothing heavy gonna be in there. Concrete would definitely last longer, but we don't, you know, the way money is these days, uh. I prefer to agree with, get four blacktop easier.
Yeah. Blacktop's not cheap either, is it?
Oh, no, it's not. Okay, so we're good in the dates?
Yep.
Okay.
Nothing new on South Market that, I mean, other than what we've gone over the last time. Uh, Forty-One North, I haven't gotten a progress report on that recently. Uh, water line inventory, I still am working on that. Um, I think I mentioned last meeting too. Troy got me in contact with the grant to help pay for that initial. So there, um, I've got some paperwork to fill out for them to submit that. Nothing new on the drinking water grant from Oprah. Bad news was we were not approved for the comp plan grant because we're still in the certain stage of our Oprah drinking water grant. So we'll have to reapply for the comp plan in October. Uh, bike and pedal was covered by the ladies today and then the lift station, we're still completing that paperwork for financial aid, so that should be taken care of. All I got.
Troy, you guys, you stay here this whole time?
I just wanna hear what's going on.
Well, we appreciate you hanging in there.
No doubt.
Is that the?
Maybe somebody had a question for me.
There you go.
I think I had one, but I forgot.
We have a young business.
I'm not gonna bring any up.
Any new business?
What?
You were gonna say something.
Oh, I do, I do think we should talk about the spigot thing, if maybe who we want to direct to get some more information, it's something we've talked about over and over, and.
What's spigot?
For the water, wastewater, you know.
Your hydrant's a home out in your yard, if you wanna buy the meter.
Oh, oh.
I'm all for it, we water, we water a lot of flowers in my house, but, it's gonna be, I definitely want Brandy's input, because.
Would it make it easier on you guys, Brandy?
Well, I don't know what the operation is, other than I, I mean, I guess I think it's kinda odd, people bringing their meter in here, and then.
No, just their, don't they just bring their reading?
I don't trust their reading.
Yeah.
It's not that big.
Yeah, I'd say it's gotta be small.
They don't screw, they bring it in here.
They bring it in here, and we write down their reading, and then.
Yeah, deduct it off.
Be gardening, when I, when I come in here next, last on the tenth, I've watered my grass about nine hours this week.
Well.
I'm gonna have a stroke when I see this.
Hey, you guys are watering your grass.
Can you imagine?
Well, it's, it's a good idea, it sounds to me like, but.
I'm gonna address that in a second.
Who's to say they don't take it to the cemetery hydrant, we don't our water, bring it in?
Well, who's to say they don't take the hose running the house, or his water house? But, you know, still, the concept, it's a good one, we should probably find out more information.
Bring me my neighbor's meter, let me record it.
I will call Brian and Dan and see what kind of price they have on them, how often they are used, whatever.